This is Britten.
Here.
Eight members are present.
Thank you. First, we have our comprehensive plan presentation with Dr. Maloney.
All right. Thank you. So this will be our plan for 2020 to 2023. Do you, am I clicking or are you? Hmm? You did? Okay, good. All right. And these are the committee members. It's inclusive of the special education plan committee members as well. And you can see it's a mix of administrators, teachers, community members, school board members, parents. So we had quite a few members serve on the committee this year, and we greatly appreciate that. So these are our meeting dates. We had a meeting in October. Our November meeting was snowed out. It was an early snowstorm. I begged the superintendent not to let us out early, but she did. We had a January 17th meeting, a February meeting, March meeting, April, and May. So the process tonight is we are doing our board presentation, which then the plan will be out for public review for 28 days. So we have a hard copy plan, and we'll also post it to the website for anyone in the public who'd like to make comments on the plan. And then we'll submit the plan by November 30th. So the implementation date for the plan is actually July 1st of 2020. And the Pennsylvania Department of Education actually announced a streamlined process before we even started doing our plan last year, where they said we only had to do these required pieces, which is to make sure that we had our professional development plan and induction plan, the safe and supportive plan, graduation requirements, and our assurances, which there are things that we say that we agree that as a district we will do, and they're mostly related to special education, that they're the only pieces we had to do. So essentially what they were saying is we did not have to have that formal committee and have those formal meetings and relook at our goals and things like that. But Mrs. Krum and I really talked about it and made the decision that we really felt like as a district we needed to do that. So we did go through the process. And the things that are optional where it says needs assessment, that's not something that we mailed out to the public and said, okay, you know, check these boxes. It was really a comprehensive look at a lot of different data points and things like that. So for example, one of the pieces, just enrollments and things like that, which got us to the point of one of our action steps has to be to look at, are we going to reconfigure? Are we going to redraw lines? Or what are we going to do through our, that was part of our needs assessment. And then the district level planning where we asked, answered, if you were on the committee, we answered those yes, no questions, you know, certain things that we have in the district. So you didn't have to redo that, which led to new goals. So, but we opted to go through that process. So what we did in October is we looked at our profile and demographics. And while we didn't write a new mission and vision, we agreed to one, that we had several versions out there. And we really landed on saying, okay, this is our mission and vision, the same with the shared values. The core foundations where it says curriculum instruction, that's really a lot of where you answer questions to, do you have this in place? Do you have, are you meeting certain standards? And you have to really go through and check whether or not you are at which level. Safe and supportive schools, again, that was a similar piece where you're answering questions. Special education plan, Kathy Guyer did a presentation on that, and we submitted that plan in May. Induction and professional development were things we talked about February through April, and we had a presentation relative to the graduation requirements. And again, as I said, the assurances are really mostly special education, but it's the district ensuring that we are going to do certain things that are required. Can you go to the next one, Jeff? Okay. So we did a data analysis, and as I said, that's part of that whole needs assessment. But these are different pieces that we looked at. Achievement data, we looked at our pay survey, demographic data, enrollment. We had lists of accomplishment and concerns, and then we did the goal planning. And then in March, we really talked about our initiatives relative to curriculum instruction, our unity council, and reconfiguration. So the goals, and these goals are actually the same goals that we had in the previous plan. I put some things in bold because I think while we believe in goal one, that we've been working on establishing a district system that ensures the consistent implementation of effective instructional practices across all classrooms in each school, I think we're doing a good job, but I don't know that we can actually say it's consistent in all schools and all classrooms. So we really feel like that's a big initiative that we should continue to have as a goal. And it's not that I think it, it's because that's how we answered the questions and came to this as a goal. Same thing with goal two, a district system to fully ensure consistent implementation of a standards-aligned curricula across all schools for all students. And while we're working on that, I really can't say it's consistent in all schools for all students. And then goal three really encompasses a lot of different pieces, but a district system that fully ensures each member of the school, community promotes, enhances, and sustains a shared vision. And I put in bold positive school climate because I really think that's essentially what we're trying to do, and ensures family and community support of student participation in the learning process. So other required plans are special education, induction, the induction plan, student services plan, and the professional development plan. And I'll give you just a little snippet on what each of those are. So the special education plan that Kathy Guyer presented is actually on a little different cycle. As you can see, it's started in 2019 and goes to 2022. And it's really about, it has to talk about how we identify students, how we're providing the least restrictive environment for students, coordination of services with our outside programs, and also types of supports in the district, and then a five-year plan. So we also have to do coordination with our preschools coming in, our students with disabilities in preschool and things like that. So the plan basically describes how we provide all of those things. The induction plan, we have a two-year induction program, and the state actually only requires one year of induction for new staff. And teachers must go through that in order to, when they're ready to convert their certificate to an instructional to induction, they have to have a certificate of completion for an induction program. So we bring our teachers in for three days in the summer, and we do training. We continue to support them with district-level meetings. They also have monthly building level meetings. It's ongoing support provided they're assigned a mentor that works with them. It could, that could be daily if they're lucky enough to have somebody in their building. They do, when it says peer observations, we actually have different assignments for the new teachers. So we like to get the teachers into a classroom so they can observe a master teacher. And we try to give them the opportunity to do that. We also have them videotape themselves so they can see themselves teaching, and they reflect on that. We do formal classroom observations as well as walkthroughs to help provide feedback to the new teachers. And they keep all of that in an electronic record. So we actually have a schoology course where the assignments are there, and then they can post their reflections and things, and that's how we track what we do with induction. And our year two people, it's not as intense as that, but they still have a schoology course where they're really, we sort of advance them up, and they're really setting goals for themselves relative to each of the four domains in our evaluation rubric. So things that they feel they want to work on throughout the year. Student services is about, again, how we are providing different services relative to our interventions and support, our counseling program, our health services. So what that really is, is again, that's, we're reporting on how we communicate different health needs and things like that, and with our immunizations and screenings and all of that. And that preschool agency coordination, we actually have a meeting. I know that with special education, there's a different requirement, and they actually attend meetings for students coming in from preschools. I know, we, the reading specialist and I have a meeting every year with our local preschools so that we're coordinating this relative to what do we like to see the students have when they enter kindergarten. And we share resources, and we share ideas and ways that they can, you know, help prepare students for what they're going to experience when they come to kindergarten work sometimes, right? And then the professional development plan, and this is not in the order of how we would provide the professional development, but basically these are all pieces that support those goals. So underneath each of the goals, you had the list, identify strategies. And so within those strategies would be the professional development that we would provide in order to accomplish the goal. So we have assessment development year one. And so once we complete the curriculum cycle in a sense of making sure that all of our documents are the same and we're all on the same page, again, we have curriculum, but we're really trying to get that in a uniform manner. So as we do that, what, the next phase of what we'd like to do is really look at assessments. So we, as you know, we've done work with our instructional strategies, our curriculum, and now we really like to focus on assessments. So we have a year one plan and a year two that would involve professional development and writing assessments with our staff. And then we have assessment revision so that, you know, would give us time to circle back and say, what did we like about it? What do we want to change? Those kinds of things. Professional development with closing, closing the achievement gap, that would fall under, you know, making sure that we're looking for ways for intervention and differentiation and small group instruction. I already talked about the curriculum vision. The Danielson framework for teaching, all of our, our staff did an online professional development with the 22 components and understanding those and how it fits into their teaching. So obviously, we would want to continue to provide professional development in that area. Implementation of our PBIS and bullying prevention programs, so we'll continue to provide professional development there. Data-driven decision-making, we now have a new data warehouse that's available to all of our staff. So it's another tool. Trauma-informed classrooms, unity council. So the professional development there is really about having our unity council work with our, our staff and students and community for that matter, really on acceptance and, and I think a holistic approach, and back to that goal three of really that positive school climate. And then district building and grade level reconfiguration, which is professional development in a sense, because it will require a lot of meetings and collaboration with staff, and again, community and parents and things like that. So. Our next steps would be to put the plan out, as I said, on the website, and we'll make it available, hard copy for anyone who wants to come in and read it for 28 days. So we'll be back to the board in November for approval. And then we'll get electronic signatures. And we, I put November 25th because it's due on the 30th, and I like to be early, you know. So that's, that's where we are.
Thank you, Dr. Maloney. Anybody have any questions? I want to thank everybody that was involved in this process. I know that's a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of activity there. So thank you for spearheading that too, Dr. Maloney. Okay. We will move on now to our update on the middle school and high school projects with Mr. Cousins from Crabtree.
Evening, everyone. So we touch on a few things. It's been a while since we last talked on the middle school projects. We've been hard at work trying to develop our construction documents and develop everything to get ready for bid. So we're going to go over the estimated project cost in light of some recent construction industry changes. And we'll talk about schedule and some construction phasing, and then we'll finish up with just some extra design. So one of the things, as you know, we do a lot of schoolwork. We bid a lot of work. Some of our, over the summer and recently, a lot of our bid projects are coming in a lot higher than expected. And what we're hearing across the board is the, the construction industry is just booming. There's a lot of, a lot of work out there. People are being more selective. Material prices are increasing. There's less labor out there. So with the economy kind of running full force, of course, you know, supply and demand, as you have more, more demand, the, the prices increase. So we're seeing that right now. So we're making, we're, we're recognizing that, and we're making adjustments. So what you'll see here is kind of where we're, where we're at with our current scope of work and where we think our project costs are now. If you recall, we're trying to get in that $7 million range. So right now, we're over where we need to be. We're working with the administration. We're working with the, with the staff to try to figure out ways to reduce scope, to get back where we are, to counteract this, this increased inflation that was a little bit beyond where we thought it would be. So the goal is, of course, getting back to that $7 million, and we're, and we're working to get there. But just wanted to give everybody a heads up of where, where we're at with the construction industry now and, and the cost. Any questions along the way, feel free to interrupt me. So this is, you've seen this before. This is kind of our renovation level to refresh everybody. What's in green down here is the new additions, and then anything in pink is major renovations, orange is minor renovations, and then some finishes. So we'll look across the board on all this. And of course, not, any change we do, we don't want to sacrifice any of the educational programs. So any of the changes that we do try to take out or reduce scope will, will be not, not affecting the education. And that's the second floor. And then talk about scheduling phasing. So we kind of got wind of, you know, this, this turn in the construction industry at the beginning of the summer. So we actually, if you recall, last time we, we were here, we were looking to go out to bid in, in January, February timeframe. We talked with our consultants. We in-house, you know, pushed, pushed our schedule up so that we could bid the project earlier. So we're actually looking to bid in November. And we want to, there's two, two reasons. We want to get ahead of, usually at the end of the, end of the year, there's a price increase, material price increase from, from a lot of manufacturers out there. So we want to get ahead of that. But also, just with how busy everybody is, is we have, we had a project bid a couple weeks ago that we had a trouble getting electrical contractors to bid it because they were already booked up for next summer. So with how busy everybody is, the earlier we can get it bid and on the books, the better we have some, the better we can have some bidding coverage. So we're looking to bid in November and receive bids before the end of the year, as I said, to beat that construction price increase. One of the other things we did as we began to develop our drawings and design, we, we've involved some contractors, just to get some input from a phasing standpoint and make sure we're, we're on base with what we are planning to do. One of the, one of the changes from last time we spoke was we, we acknowledge that you're probably going to have to go into the school year with some of the, some of these spaces that aren't going to be occupied. But what we heard from some of the ones that we're talking to, that, that there's so little labor out there and so much work out there, that it's really going to be a tall task to do as much as we want to do over that summer. So we're looking to make adjustments on, so here's, this is the phase one of construction, which would essentially be the new addition out, out front. And then that could complete over the summer. And then the bulk of the work, we are looking to do over the summer. But we've kind of make the, made the acknowledgement that there is going to have to be a phase three that's really going to have to go into the, into the, into the calendar year, into December. And what we're going to do with that, you can see here, so the, so this is just the first draft, first, first pass of this. We've really got to work at this in more detail with the administration and, and the principals to really, really plan this out. But here's the green that'll happen in the, in the spring of next year. And then trying to do the bulk of the work in red, if you, you know, if you remember that renovation level, not all the building was hatched, but, or shaded, but every, essentially every room is going to get painted. So, so basically, there's going to be work in every, in every room of the building. So everything in orange, this orange color is going to be, try to be done over that summer. And then that fall, we're going to try to phase these other classrooms. And now the, the luxury you do have is that because it is the intermediate school, you do have some vacant classrooms, some extra space to grow into. So there's about six to, six to seven classrooms that you'll be able to kind of phase these into. So unoccupied, there's some like foreign language classrooms that are planned that you currently don't have foreign language teachers for. And then, and then for, just like we did for the high school, for every grade level, there's a flex classroom that as your, as your enrollment increases, you'll expand into. So we have, we have those classrooms that we can use at our disposal that, that'll be vacant, that we'll have to, you know, so we're looking to do these in clusters here, where the contractor will be in there during the school year, working. And then teachers will move into that space. They'll move on to the next vacant classrooms that the teachers move down, out into. It's not ideal, but it's kind of what we're up against with, with today's construction industry. You'll see, we're trying to locate them kind of in the perimeter of, of, of the building. There's some in the, in the middle, but we're trying to have as little disruption as possible during the school year by the contractor so they can have an easy in and out over here, or an easy in and out over here. And then on the second floor, you know, up and down through the stair, or, or areas where they, where it'll be the least, the least disruption. So any questions on the cost update or the, the phasing?
I have a question. The other evening, Mr. Nelson was talking to us about possible change orders with renovation versus construction. I didn't really pick up on the numbers, whether that is part of your estimated costs, is that built, is there a factor built in for that?
Yeah, there is, there is a factor built into there. So it will be this line item here. This is an all, this is not all contingency that would handle those change orders. This also deals with some testing and inspection and some other items. So any of those, we do have a contingency built in there. Similar to the high school, we used a percentage fee, a percentage of the construction cost for that, for this contingency. I think it's a 3%.
Just a question concerning particularly the, the phase three proportions. I, I get the, the perimeter classrooms, I think will have minimal disruption. Some of the areas on the inside, so if my understanding is correct, we're going to have students in the same hallway where the renovations will be?
Yeah. And, and like I said before, a lot of these classrooms are just receiving maybe new flooring or paint. So it's not like, you know, demolition and a lot of construction material back and forth. You know, there might be someone in there working, and, and then on the break, they're in and out. So, but it's not going to be that, you know, wheelbarrows down the hallway and, and, you know, jackhammering and things like that. We'll make sure any of those major reconfiguration of spaces and kind of the dirty construction happens over, over the summer. But yes, you could expect to see interact, you know, at the same time.
Will we be looking at open ceilings in, in any of the hallways and such?
No, no, that would, I would say any of, you see the hallways are in that orange. So any work we are doing to the hallways would, would, we would want it to happen over this, over the summer. Yeah. And we'll work closely with the administration to make sure safety, you know, and we might say, all right, these three classrooms that are more internal, that, that circulation has to come through, through this rear entrance for the contractors. We'll be very meticulous as far as dictating that. So we, we have the safety of the students in mind. Any other questions? Okay. So now the fun stuff. So as you know, the, one portion of the project is the exterior addition where we're knocking down the old portion of the school, and it'll essentially create a new entrance to the school. So we took it, took it upon ourselves to kind of create a, a new look to that and a new, a new entrance. So over on this side, this is that administrative area. So that's that one-story kind of office area, central administration and guidance. And then this is that new entry piece that would, would act as the new public and student entrance to the school. We are locating this whole addition on the upper level. So the auditorium level, those that are very familiar with the high school will know that as you come from the auditorium to the current administration, you step down a series of steps. And then, of course, to get in the building, you step down a series of steps. We wanted to eliminate that, you know, that sunken entrance. So this will all be up at that higher level, the auditorium. And then within the building, as you go back into that wing, you'll, you'll then step down into the other wing. So as you work your way around, that creates kind of a, an elevated area here. So the bus, the majority of the buses will probably come through the existing parking lot here, and, and that's the majority of traffic from the buses. I'll go back a slide. All the handicap parking and any buses that have students with special needs will come here, and this will essentially be at the same elevation. So they won't have to use those steps. But this will, this will be the view from that angle. These are those collaboration spaces that we're creating at the high school. So those, that's part of the new construction here. They'll have a lot of natural light coming into those. That's the, the eighth grade and the sixth grade up above it. And then that's kind of another view from down from the parking lot. And then this is back to your existing building here. So that was kind of what I had to present tonight on the, on the middle school. Were there any questions, thoughts?
Does the water runoff go from that section of the building there?
So yeah, we'll have all new roof drains that will tie into existing roof drains. They'll actually, this section of building here will have roof drains that will be piped underground. There's currently a, a, a lot of roof drains that come out to a storm inlet out in front. We're actually having to relocate that storm inlet, repipe those existing roof drains in, and then we'll tie those new ones into there. This section over here, this two-story piece here, and this, this taller entry piece will actually pipe down to, there's an existing inlet over here that picks up some building drain, drainage from this section of the building. So it's a kind of, it's probably about six or seven feet down. So we'll be able to tie in at the top of that and tie those roof drains into that section. So we're tying in. And from an approval standpoint, we're not increasing any impervious areas. So we're staying away from having to go through county conservation district and get all those approvals. You can remember how those were challenging on the high school. So we don't have to go through that on this one. Any other questions? Do you want me to touch on the?
If you would.
The bleachers? Okay. So one of the things we talked about at the committee meeting before was the need to look at the existing stadium and some things you're looking to improve there. I think some safety concerns with handrails. Don't have, currently have any handrails and maybe some improvements to the press box and some other things. We can certainly take a look at that. What we'll do is we'll look at it from a code standpoint. As soon as you add a handrail to a, to an aisle, you decrease the, the required width of travel. So most likely, that's going to mean you're going to have to expand the wa, the width of the aisle and take some seating out to do that. But certainly, what we'll do is we'll look at, do a survey of the existing conditions, document all the existing conditions. We'll look at what it, what it takes to put a handrail in, what, what's required egress width based on the capacity of the, of the bleachers. We'll look at the code implications for the, for increasing or revising the size of the press box. There is a, a certain maximum limit you're allowed from a square footage standpoint, where if you go over that limit, you have to provide accessibility to it. And as mentioned to the folks in the meeting, that you, you know, most high school stadiums, you'll see the same size press box because once you go over that, you have to put an elevator to it and, or get a ramp to it. Nobody wants to do that. So those are all things we can look at and generate a report that'll have the implications, everything along with, along with cost. So that you can properly plan for the future for, for any, for any improvements you want to, you want to do there. And that might also mean that as soon as you start modifying bleachers, you'll have to get the appropriate ADA seating to those bleachers. Make sure you have the appropriate counts, but also the appropriate space for a wheelchair seat. And then you'll, depending on how far we go and the interpretation of the code official, they might want us to look also at the number of restroom facilities you have and make sure that's, that meets code, which could open a whole ball of wax. But, but we would think that the code official would be understanding, and we're making accessibility improvements and, and making an effort to improve, improve the facility that way. So.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Scott.
All right, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Stefanovic, township update.
Good evening. The past month has been active, the same as several of them this summer. We've processed 50 building permits in July, nine of them for single-family homes. And it seems like it's continuing. I assume comes winter and that it'll slow down a little bit, but, but the work just seems to be coming. In the wastewater treatment plant, the last meeting, I mentioned about a In the wastewater treatment plant, the last meeting, I mentioned about a problem that we had, and, uh, the repairs were completed. I did send some pictures if we can get them or not. What I had mentioned last, last month was the, the flushable wipes that are not, uh, disintegrating in the system have begun to cause a major problem. And the picture on the left is that, uh, wheel with them hanging on it, and, and it does look rather gross, and it was. But they don't disintegrate and they are attaching to each other, so, so the repairs were done. Of course, the new ones on the right. It did cost all of us about a hundred and sixty thousand for this. Uh, there is a project in place that will help this situation. This sort of was a surprise to us, but, uh, there's a project that, we call it the Headworks, and that's at the head of this facility. Uh, there will be a filtering system to keep out rags and gloves and, and, and now, uh, it will also, uh, hopefully solve this problem. But we're asking everyone to, uh, try and dispose of this type of product, uh, maybe in a little bit different way than down the toilet. And actually, it would save us all, because if this continues on, uh, we're hoping to get, that the Headworks project is gonna solve it, but that is not gonna happen in the next two or three months. That's probably like a twelve to fourteen month project till we get the whole thing done.
What ways are you getting that message out? I'm just curious if there's anything we can do to help.
We are doing it in different meetings that, that people go to, just to try to make the public aware. The plant manager, when the prob- problem occurred, put the word out there in a different fashion and he, uh, I don't know what the right word is. He made some people nervous. And got some, some, some responses actually from the companies that produce these things, but, uh, you know. We know we stand on firm ground there and he's got the information, so we're continuing on trying to just ask that they be, they be disposed of in a, in a better fashion, not into the septic system. So, coming to meetings like this is where we try to get the word out as best we can. We hope people are aware of it. Okay, uh, I have two other things. Uh, of course, we have a lot of, of, uh, projects going on. Uh, our building is, uh, ninety-nine percent done, so we're, we're pretty good there coming into the winter months. PennDOT is, uh, starting and working with us on, uh, bridge reconstructions. There's three of them that are on the list. One is on Canal around the regionals. Uh, PennDOT was proposing to, to close Canal when they do this, and this is not gonna happen in the next four or six months. This is in, in the planning phases. But it is coming because the bridges are, are, uh, in bad shape. Uh, another one is on Fox Run at Palomino. There, there's already barrels and, and, uh, things up trying to keep people off the edges, 'cause the edges is where the problem occurs on that bridge. And then the other one is at Butter and Fox Run. So if you can picture, if PennDOT would decide they were gonna work on all three of those at the same time, we would have a real fiasco, so we are definitely working with them to make sure that doesn't happen. And, uh, so the traffic can move in and out of our area properly, or reasonably at least for these periods of time. The bridge reconstructions, I believe they, they are improving that process quite a bit and doing it a lot faster with, uh, preformed beams and everything else that they're, that they're working with, so. So that one's happening. And then the other one, if you're not aware, uh, PennDOT has been proposing a design for a Canal Road, this, that's what they're calling it, a Canal Road interchange on Route eighty-three. Uh, it is moving along, probably faster than what we imagined. Uh, there has been some, uh, meetings and discussions on it, and, uh, it's moving forward pretty well. Now, it's still more of like a twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four type, type, uh, timeframe, uh, but they are looking to build an interchange out on eighty-three that would, uh, come into Canal. And then, uh, there would be a lot of changes to Canal coming into our, coming into our area, our township, uh, as that occurs. So in the next three to six, four to six-year timeframe, that's probably gonna be happening to us, or with us, or however you look at it. Any questions right now?
The owner said you said you wanna shut Canal Road when they put the new bridge in.
Pardon?
Shut Canal Road when they put the new bridge in.
Uh, that was the first proposal, uh, we've been talking about, uh, you know, if, if that does have to happen, what's the expediency of getting the work done versus doing it in phases and still letting traffic flow? But, uh, even taking Canal down to one lane is still gonna be, uh, quite a nightmare, probably during a two or three timeframes of, of every day. So, uh, yes, PennDOT is in a mode right now where they like to close roads, so there's, you know, we get involved as best we can and, uh, try to recommend, uh, what's good for everybody in the area.
Way that you traveled, that'd make a real mess.
Yes, it could, especially if they would decide to work on, well, and we won't, well, I should say that. Hopefully, we won't let them, like, work on, on, uh, the Fox Run Bridge at the same time they're doing Canal. I mean, that would just be, that would be awful, so.
Well, I know a couple of years ago, the state was doing bridges in the area out there, and didn't matter which way you wanted to go, the bridge was out.
Yes.
That was about three, four years ago.
Well, actually, I will give them, uh, the people at the township credit, the people that are involved. They wanted to close, uh, Route seventy-four when they did a bridge down at the bottom of the, at the golf course. And that was nixed and said, "We can't do this. We just can't." And we went through several meetings and they finally agreed to the process that they used, which wasn't too bad. So, and actually, the bridge got wider in doing that process, so.
You had mentioned the bridges, brings up a question I had. The, the bridge that goes on Baker Road, that's the elevated bridge there, it's got, um, barrels there on it right now, is that? Is there something happening there with that? Is that, I guess that's kind of the, the line, is it not, there, um, is there anything involving our township there?
I have not heard that in any of our discussions. I can ask, is that in Dover Township, or is that like?
It's Dover Township. It's right on the line.
It's right on the line? Right on the line?
Yeah.
I do know if we've put barrels on the, on the bridge, then there is some concern on its carrying capacity.
There's been barrels on that for over a year now.
Has there?
Yeah, there was, there was some signs out at one point that there was gonna, that was.
That it was closed for like four days, but they reopened it.
Yeah, I just was curious if there was something happening there.
Yeah, it's the Dover Township, West Manchester Line.
Mm-hmm.
Right, yeah.
Is the bridge on our side?
I think it's half.
I think the creek is the bridge.
It really is.
I know, it's closed.
Yeah.
I'll ask the question and see what information I can bring, then, uh, till the next time.
Thanks.
I have a question about the, um, the eighty-three, when they bring it to Canal, and you said they'll be changing Canal. What, what kind of, I'm assuming it's going to be more commercialized tractor-trailers coming through there?
Yes. Yes.
How's that gonna impact us? Is that a PennDOT-owned road? Is Canal PennDOT?
Canal is, I believe, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So are they gonna be?
But they do involve the, the community, uh, or the townships.
Right, well, I know, the impact, I drive that way every single day on my way home, um, and the impact of taking Susquehanna Trail and just the impact of those tractor-trailers on that road. Just gives me a little pause as to what that would do, you know, to increase the traffic on Canal, so I wasn't sure, said they, they were gonna make changes, are they gonna?
They're probably gonna look at mostly widening and, uh, appropriate places have left turn lanes. I'm, I'm sure there's many places on Canal where you just, you couldn't make it a four-lane road. There's just not enough physical space.
And some of those turns are kinda.
Yep. Hopefully, they will improve them, so. I mean, if you hear about meetings, it's in the newsletter and on the website for the township, and, and a lot of the meetings are open to the public, so if you're, you are more than welcome, you know, to come in and, and, uh, listen to the discussions and get your input in.
Anybody else? Thank you, Steve.
Okay.
Okay, next up is our first public comment period. This is a three-minute period for items on or off of the agenda. If you have anything you'd like to comment on, please come to the microphones and state your name and address for the record. Okay, board president's communication. We did not have any executive sessions this evening, so we'll move right into our committee reports. Uh, the first report is our comprehensive planning and curriculum and professional development committee with Mr. Delauter and Mrs. Mailey.
Alrighty, um, we start off our meeting, uh, with, uh, Mrs. Krum coming in and, uh, giving us a, a look at the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one calendar. First teacher day, uh, for that year would be on August twenty-fourth. And in that, that first week, basically what they were looking at was the high school and middle school, uh, teachers would be a time for them to unpack their rooms. Elementary school would, uh, have some, uh, professional development days there, and then the second week, uh, would be a, an additional week, uh, for teachers. And that would be, again, professional development opportunities for them. Uh, they're looking at, uh, for both those weeks, doing only a four-day week, having classes off. And then first student day w- would be looking at September eighth for our K ones.
K five, K six, seven, nine, twelve.
So that would be September eighth, and then September ninth would be, uh, first day back for, uh, for all students. Looking at three data days, uh, throughout the calendar year, and then our last student day, uh, would be June eighth, uh, with last teacher day would be the, the following day, June ninth. Uh, one thing with this calendar, we will only have one snow makeup day during the year, and the rest of the, uh, calendar, or, or rest of the snow makeup days would occur at the end of the school year. Uh, and I'm sure that when she brings it forth next month, that, uh, she will provide you with a more detailed, uh, explanation of what's going on in there. Second thing we talked about was, uh, s- policy two-twelve, which we brought before us, uh, next month, and that is, uh, reporting student progress. This is a policy that we already have, uh, with just an update, and, uh, the only update was some minor wording, wording changes, um, uh, that would more closely align with, with how we do things, uh, within the district. Policy one oh three point one is a new policy. Uh, it is a, an offshoot of policy one oh three, where one oh three deals with, it's, uh, the non-discrimination. Policy one oh three one is non-discrimination qualified students with disabilities, uh, where policy one oh three deals, uh, specifically with our students with IEPs and such. Um, the, the one oh three point one are for students who have a five oh four plan. Uh, and, uh, Mrs. Guyer talked briefly about that. Again, that will be bringing, will be brought forth, um, the next meeting as well. Did I say that was a new policy? I don't remember if I said that or not. It is a new policy if I didn't say that. Uh, next, uh, Mrs. Johnson, uh, talked with us a little bit about the DESA screener, and. It assesses the social and emotional competencies of our students. Uh, we piloted it last year in K to two, and we're using it in K to three this year, right? Um, and it's administered by the teacher, and that's about all I really understood about. So, uh, if you want anything else, uh, Mrs. Johnson, I'm sure would, uh, be willing to, to talk to you more a- about that. Um, but, uh, we talked to, uh, the two kindergarten teachers, or in first grade, second grade, second grade teacher, uh, over here, and, uh, they seemed to, to really, uh, find it very useful, uh, for their students, identifying students. Who, uh, might need some additional interventions in there. And then, next, uh, we talked about the, the K to eight science resource selection process. Our current, uh, vendor Pearson, uh, contract ran out. Uh, this is the last year of the contract, or last year was the last year of the contract. Uh, they did meet with four different vendors, um, and narrowed it down to, again, uh, trying to pilot a Pearson, um, current version of their program. Uh, so they're doing a one-year pilot of that new material. One of the issues that teachers are finding, that it is not aligned to the PA standards, so there has been some discussion, uh, amongst the group. Uh, and they are not comfortable at this point, uh, with bringing forth a, a recommendation, uh, of, of moving forward with this, this, uh, new vendor at this point. So, so we're gonna keep that up in the air and, uh, do some further, um, updates and, and studies on that. And then finally, uh, she has touched briefly on the curriculum rating, uh, where we're at currently. Uh, we have moved into the high school, and she says that her aggressive, uh, schedule is still occurring and, and still moving forward. She has met with English, basically English is where she, uh, English is sciences and. And, and social studies, uh, and then we talked a little bit, a little bit about the, the social studies, um, part of it, where, um, I guess it's a, a broad spectrum, a lot of different things, uh, occurring. Uh, one, um, so, I think that was it on that in a nutshell. Mrs. Mailey.
Yeah, the civil, the civil service test.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, and, uh, there is a civil, the civics test requirement now that our students have to take, and we have decided that we are going to give our students in.
Eleventh.
Eleventh grade, right? Um, the actual.
Is that starting this year? Next year.
The actual, um, citizenship test, uh, that immigrants who want to become citizens, uh, so our students will be taking that exact test, uh, for grade, um, starting, again, next year. And we took a little example of it. Uh, we took a twenty, twenty-question quiz off that test, and, um, some of us, um.
Need a refresher course?
Yes, thank you, need a refresher course, so. Uh, that's all I have. Mrs. Mailey, anything else on that?
No.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. We'll move on now to the capital project steering committee. Uh, Mr. DeSho and I, uh, met with our administrative team, uh, several of them, talked about a couple of items. Uh, the primary item that we discussed tonight was accelerating the demolition date of the pool at the intermediate school. Um, the contractors have some reasons for that, a lot of which revolves around maybe con- um, concrete temperatures, things like that, uh, to be able to pour things, so. Um, we did, uh, meet with Mr. Lethery from the athletic area, and we are adjusting, uh, the schedule, which was, uh, originally scheduled for February ninth to begin actually the process now on January twenty-sixth. Uh, so we are looking at bumping up the date to keep things moving forward. Um, there's still a lot of details to work out there, but that is the tentative plan right now.
May, do, do we know what we're doing then with swimming? Is, is swim, swim season in full swing at that point, or?
Oh, it's almost done at that point.
It's almost done at that point, okay.
But he, this was the first rich even, kinda knew about the, he, he was pretty good, so he has to look at the two, only two weeks to move, so I think that's what he's gonna go to.
And one of those weeks is counties.
Yeah.
So, be moving around anyhow.
So we'll make sure that our swimmers are accommodated.
Yeah.
Yes, we, we, we want, but as they said, they'll also remind them they're gonna have a beautiful new pool.
Um, and that will hopefully help to keep the building project on track, because right now, according to Mr. Nelson, we're about three to four weeks ahead of schedule, uh, which is a good thing. Um, so, um, and we're doing well on our change orders at this point, uh, so things are really looking great with the project, so. Mr. Nelson, if you have a report or you wanna give us some updates on things, that'd be great on the building project.
I don't know if your picture can rival the one we saw, Steve. I don't know about that.
That's sort of the end. There you go. Okay, this is, basically, this is what happened in, in August, uh, so it's our sep- in first part of September. This is looking towards the pool, so you'll see a progression of pictures here that are kinda gonna bring home how far along they've been. Uh, this is the same shot, so in the previous shot, we didn't have any of the cafeteria done or the kitchen area done. Um, this is the kitchen area, uh, part of ware- warehouse, loading dock, um, uh, some spaces out that way. This was actually, uh, this is a real recent picture. This was actually yesterday. We poured a second floor, uh, concrete, uh, for a mechanical room on the second floor right next to the auditorium. So the auditorium is just to your left there where the brick is, and cafeteria and, and pool is on your right. Excuse me. Um, this is just another shot of pouring concrete, so, uh, we pump everything because we can't get to it with the truck, and we can't get to it with, you know, wheelbarrows just wouldn't make sense, so. That's what you see, that big arm coming down there on top. We pump it, uh, and.
Uh, and it, it's pretty fast when they do it, comes out pretty good. This is, uh, the ca- the, the kitchen area, I keep calling cafeteria, it's kitchen area. This is the serving area, uh, uh, the walls are up, we're putting some steel, steel truss work up. Uh, this is a shot of our mechanical room. These are our three heating boilers. They're in place, they're not hooked up yet, but they are in place. Roof's on here. This is right behind it, this is, uh, getting ready to pour some pads for pumps, um, water softeners, uh, that kinda thing, so that's all behind it. This courtyard shot, so this is the courtyard, it's in the academic wing. Uh, it's pretty much done except for the top soil and the grass getting planted, so all the, all the concrete's laid, bricks are laid, all that's done. So this is just a shot from the second floor, kinda gives you a little bit better view of it. Once that's done, that'll be an area totally enclosed, so you can take classes out there, you don't have to worry about kids leaving or people coming in or any of that kinda stuff, kinda totally enclosed. Um, this is the auditorium, so a, a lot of shots of this before. Uh, the roof's on now, um, you'll notice that there's a lot of overhead work going on here. There's, the catwalk's going in for the lighting. So there's a lighting catwalk up there, all the duct works going in for air conditioning and heat. Um, you can just barely see it if you look close up in the rafters, the sprinkler pipes are in. It's another shot of the catwalks up there. This is the main entryways, there's two main entries, they're, they're getting ready to block that up. This was actually earlier this week. They put the door frames in, so getting ready to do that. Uh, this is, uh, we have these sitting everywhere. These are our, our, uh, unit ventilators for, they'll be in each classroom, each corridor, closet, you name it. Uh, there's one of these for heating and air conditioning, so there's prob- there's quite a few of them out there. I mean, it's rooms and rooms of them. This is what it looks like once they install them, so they're hooked up to fresh air duct and then your unit ventilator, then your, your drops will come off that and go out to, uh, for different parts of the room. Um, this is up on top of the auditorium. I took this shot to kinda show you, the auditorium is one of the few rooms where you, you know, you don't have any insulation inside, obviously, because you just have the steelwork up there and it's just gonna be painted black, you don't have a ceiling, so you, you know, chance of losing a lot. There's about seven inches insulation on top of here. So that kinda brown stuff there is about four inches and then there's about another two to three inches between the next two layers of, uh, styrofoam on top of that. And then, of course, your rubber gets laid on top of that. This is from the top of the roof, looking down into the nadatorium. We, we won't dig the nadatorium out, um, kinda just like what we're doing with the auditorium, till we get the roof on and get everything up, up atop done. Cause right now we've got this really nice level spot to run everything on, and once we dig it out, it's gonna be tough to get around in there. So we'll get the roof on here and, uh, get, get all the walls up to the right there, where you see the little short walls. Uh, that is your locker rooms, your coach's office, and then there'll be a, a floor on top of that, and that'll be your second floor seating for, uh, observation deck. Another shot looking down at it, this is, um, storage for uh, scene storage next to the stage. It's a really big room. Uh, this is kinda, I'm still on top of the roof looking the other way, so you can kinda see how, how, how far we're along. Uh, the area right in front of you where the guys are, are working, uh, is classrooms, and just beyond that is, uh, our graphic arts, uh, room. It's a big area right here. That's graphic arts. Um, so again, I'm still, I'm still up on the roof here. Um, so we started painting outside exterior, uh, when they, when they lay bricks, they put a piece of steel across the top and then they put the aluminum windows in, so we go back and paint that, it's like about two to three inches wide, we paint that steel. So that's what they're doing, they're in the courtyard. Um, this is the, uh, cement pads for our chowers, our transformer and our generator. Uh, so the two big pads on the, on the right are our chower, and then the pad just to the left of that and, and closest to you is the generator, and then the far pad's the transformer. These, this is painting, we're, we're painting, we have almost, uh, on the first floor, we have, I'd say, pretty much every room painted. Uh, if not with final coat, with least block filler. Uh, we have final coat on a lot of it downstairs, about half of it upstairs right now, so th- this, this picture doesn't do it justice. I didn't stand here long, cause it was like a fog. It's really, when they spray it and then after they spray it, they roll it, so it's kinda really foggy. They were getting ready to put in, uh, our force main tank here, um, so uh, they were putting these boxes in so that when they got down the pit, that no one got entrapped with, uh, caving in a wall and stuff. Uh, this, this is part of it. Uh, the lids on it right now, and the only reason the lids on it is to keep when they're backfilling with stone, they don't fill the pipe up. It's twenty-seven feet deep to the bottom. So, this is a shot from upstairs looking at the front of the auditorium, so these doors to your left here. The first one you see is going back alongside the band hallway, and then the next series of doors is going into the auditorium. And the kitchen, um, serving area is directly in front of you. Uh, I took this shot, I was over here yes, the other day, and this is looking back towards the building from the opposite side of the, of the, uh, multipurpose field. Um, just another shot from, from the school looking out. Oops, went too fast. This is our first chower that came in yesterday morning. Um, they each came on their own truck, cause they were, they were pretty large and, and fairly heavy, and this is when they're in place. They're about thirty feet long. And probably ten, twelve feet high. And this is the start of our dust collection system for the shops. Uh, this is just the bottom part, there'll eventually be a collection barrel or tub or something underneath that, and then your, your mechanical part sits on top. They just didn't get it up yet, so, and that's my last picture. Any, any questions?
Yes. I was asked last week, why are you having back of the school two dead ends and not one road around the back?
We don't have enough room to get a road around the back. We don't have enough real estate.
That's the reason. Cause we're back at the end, because you said there's two roads in back, but they're both dead ends.
Yeah, it goes, it goes, the one road goes back, I'd say, almost halfway, if not a little further, and it goes to the back of the auditorium, and the other, the other road is a temporary road, that won't be there once we're done construction. It'll actually only go back to the one side to the back.
Okay.
The building's fully sprinkled, um, so as a fire goes, it's pretty, it's pretty safe, um, so.
Are the, um, I saw the light standards up, up on the multipurpose field back there, are they, are they operational at this point?
Yes. We don't have electric yet.
Okay. I thought you said it was gonna be a little while.
Yeah, um, we're still waiting on, on MedEd to give us electric. We're hoping to get permanent electric sometime in October or November, that's what, that's our goal. Um, because part of, part of getting electric is then we get heat. So till we get electric, we're not gonna have heat in the building for this winter, we'll have to do supplemental heat, um, in which that will that'll hamper construction. They won't be able to, you know, work in as many spots, cause they won't be able to heat the building, so. Our goal is to get our, to get our gas, our gas on and our heat, our electric on, so we can get temporary heat in the building, um, heat the building up. We have gases there, it's not, it's not turned on yet, they won't turn it on till we get electric, uh, but it's there, that's all finished. The electric is done, we just don't have it. We don't have the transformer in place yet, and we don't have the electric from MedEd yet, so. Um, next week they wanna, uh, today, I should say, they, they got, it was four trucks out this morning when I pulled in at six thirty. Uh, we got all the steel for the roof over the nadatorium, uh, so that all came today. Uh, so they're gonna start working on that tomorrow, and then next week, I don't know exactly what day, but they planned to start building the gym, uh, the steelwork in a gym. It's moving right along.
Anybody else? Mr. DeSho, did you have anything you wanted to add to the report? Okay. Thank you. Uh, next is Facilities and Safe and Supportive Schools with Mr. Emig and Mr. Rahauer.
There wasn't much on our agenda tonight. Uh, we did talk about two things. First of all, if y'all remember, we got a grant for new cameras. Seventy of them have, have already been installed. The rest cannot be installed until the completion of the construction is finished. And the other item was, there will not be much on the D-ten list next year due to the high school project and the renovation of the old high school. Mr. Rahauer, anything else?
I said we don't have to do anything, cause there's no money to spend, so we got it made for next year.
That's it? I'm coming to your meetings next year for committee. Okay, any questions for them? Okay, Human and Fiscal Resources, Mr. Cook and Mrs. Britton.
We, uh, good evening, everyone. Um, we met this evening and, uh, we had several items on our agenda for, for tonight. Um, first item was, uh, our audit update. As you know, we're going through the audit right now, um, which is a normal process this time of the year. It's moving along. Um, Ms. Lepo had given us, um, the update on that. It's probably about ninety percent complete at this point, in, in her estimation. Um, right now, they're currently working on the fixed assets portion of our, of our, um, uh, audit and, um, just a little bit of an update in the, the way the finances are looking. Um, it, I'm pleased to report that it's looking like we're gonna probably net out at about break even. Uh, possibly even a little bit on the plus side. Um, there are still a few things that they're working on that could alter that, but, um, some of the things that, information that has come to light in, in recent times is, um, we had another very good year with, uh, claims on, at Lincoln Benefits Trust with our, uh, insurance claims, and, uh, that netted us approximately five hundred thousand dollars to the, to the good. That was not expected. Um, we also saw an increase in earned income tax as a result of the economy the way it is, so more economy equates to more people with productive jobs, which equates to higher earned income tax, so that also was a plus, and there was a third component, um, which I don't fully understand, but I, I will pass it along anyhow, was a Schedule A adjustment from the IU, which also netted some, some positivity there, so, um, we should be fi- you know, coming down the homestretch on the final audit and are finalizing that year's record, so, uh, it's looking like some positivity there. And then our next item that we talked about was our current year, uh, or pro- our next year's budget update. Uh, as we mentioned last month in our, um, report out, uh, our timeline for this year, or for next year's, this is the twenty twenty-one budget, uh, is intended to proceed at a quicker pace than what it has in the past, but basically about a month ahead with the goal of, uh, getting to the final budget approval in April rather than May. Um, one of the driving forces, besides having a very busy summer next year, uh, with a lot of things going on here, uh, one of the driving forces is it, it will give us an opportunity to be able to post positions that might become available at that point with the intent of, of hopefully being able to encourage higher, highest qualified, uh, employees and applicants to, uh, before they've made commitments to other districts perhaps. Um, so, um, we had talked about this possibly being a new normal, so, uh, our intent is to move that budget process along a little bit quicker than what we have in the past. And then next, we had talked about policy one oh four, uh, nondiscrimination discriminatory harassment employment practices. Um, this, this policy update is really happening as a result of, uh, a lot of language changes, a lot of things that have changed in our, um, in, in our society, so to speak, uh, from where this policy was first written. There was a lot of, if you look at it, there's a lot of bold print in it, a lot of terminology changes, a lot of inclusions and differences from when that policy was, was last updated. It's a, as Christina had mentioned, it's a very legalese type of policy. Um, it's a federally, federal government driven policy. And, um, with some policies, we have the ability to make some changes that are very, uh, specific to our district here. This policy is more one though, that we're just following the PSBA lead, uh, because there's a lot of legal implications on it, so uh, this policy will be coming before us in October then for, for, uh, approval. Um, and then finally, we talked about our staffing update. Christina never has a dull moment, uh, and this is no, no difference right now, so there's still quite a few, uh, staff openings right now. Uh, we've been very blessed to have some transfers, some internal transfers, but that has left some openings, uh, in its wake, so there's still some things that are, are very challenging to fill. Um, even some, some positions that have been very difficult to even get an applicant or two for, so it's, it's a constant challenge for us. And right now, with the start of the school year, it's very, very difficult, even increasingly difficult to find highly qualified candidates who are willing to make that change at this juncture. Just getting started, getting, getting to know their kids and, and then at this point, uprooting and making a change, so it makes it even doubly tough at this time of the year, so I'm sure we'll have more discussions as we, you know, sometimes have this certain, uh, staff issues seemingly ongoing, so we'll have to continue to look at how we can best rectify these situations when these repetitive openings, uh, occur. That's what I had. Mrs. Britton, anything I might have missed?
Got it.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to our miscellaneous category for any other comments or observations from our board members tonight. Hearing none, we'll move on to our last public comment period. This is a two minute period for any items on or off of the agenda. Okay, with that, future meetings, October fifteenth is our regular board meeting at seven PM. And October seventeenth, we will have our committee meetings at six and our board planning meeting at seven. If there is no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
You're adjourned, thank you.